Everybody take off their hats, please. Silence your phones.
...
Okay, we have a quorum with three. Come to order at five. And first to repeat here, we're going first public hearing of the CDVG grant.
And Cindy will, Cindy will speak upon that and this bothers you, maybe speaking behind your back. Let me know. I'll just turn in.
So the town of Rockville, based on conversation and some other projects and conversations that have been going on in the past, are interested in applying to the Office of Community and Rural Affairs for a planning grant to update their comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plans include a bunch of stuff, but mainly it's a document that provides direction to the council as they start thinking about future projects and where the public wants to see them to, you know, invest in, spend some time on figuring things out. So it could be anywhere from sidewalks to parks to restoration of the downtown, historic buildings, various things. So this, beginning portion of this meeting tonight is a public hearing, an opportunity for folks to ask questions about the grant, about what the project includes, anything related to that.
Do we have any comments from the public?
We do have some letters of support, so if you're not comfortable speaking up in the meeting, you are welcome to document your thoughts on this and provide them probably just to Brandy and she'll get them to meet. The application is actually due next Friday on the 17th, so I would need any comments prior to that, please. So for those of you that live in Rockville, I mean, do you have some just thoughts, perceptions that you think this comprehensive plan might address that you've been thinking about? It's really important for us to have public comment in sections, so I'm going to prompt you.
Someone asked a question. More sidewalks, perhaps, more sidewalk.
And why do you want more sidewalks?
I'd like the town to become more walkable and I would like to be hospitable to all of our citizens and guests so that they are not injured while they're walking.
It's funny, and just, I mean, we did that bike and pedestrian planning and it was funny to look at a map of Rockville where the sidewalks exist and it seems like none have been added, have been added since just like the downtown development. And when you look at anywhere north and around, it was a really surprising map to look at.
There've been sections added different places, but then it kinda, kinda came to a halt with other stuff going on.
Yeah.
I would agree. I noticed kids that walk on the road during school, so I've been going to school, front of school, so I feel like it's an important necessity.
So our, our police department, are there things occurring in the town that you think addressing certain items in a comprehensive plan may help from either a safety, a communicative way that this comprehensive plan may address? Put you on the spot.
Some of the things that are dark that we'd like to have more item.
Good. Does anyone work on any committees, organizations throughout the town that there's certain things that you've been talking about that you might be able to address in a comprehensive plan, whether it be a historical society, a library, a friends group of any sort, you know, doing that stuff?
Does this grant cover maybe potentially a community center or another park or something?
Yeah, so addressing that need, so if you, if you, you know, had a group of people that wanted to participate in this discussion, if they say it's priority that we have a new community center or a place to, to do these, these certain things, you know, it needs a kitchen, it needs restrooms, it needs this, that would be a very important discussion as part of this.
Gotcha.
It's possible that in the near future there'll be some discussion about perhaps a little bit of green space and some restrooms. We were discussing upgrading, repairing, and maybe some new playground equipment as well at the parks.
At the parks, yeah, absolutely. Because even though you may have a park plan, this gets so complemented and having a comprehensive plan showing that, that the community has put forward thought of what they want to do and what they want your community to look like, it's a good document to reference when you do like with different funding, just like your park plan is that way. So yeah, anything that you're wanting to see occur in the community can be a part of this plan. And I'm, we talked about this book, but this is the proposal in the selection of the firm, which was America's Structure of Morning to create the comprehensive plan. So I think Brandy, you have one of these here too. So this was our document that you could review prior to this meeting if you had questions about what was being planned. I can tell you that the plan itself, the total cost is going to be $60,000. The town is required to do a 10% budget, so there's that and then the remaining we're asking for in grant dollars of $50,000. So just to give you an idea of where we're at on the cost of this. Comprehensive plans typically good for five years, so it's not a one and done in one year. It is something that will keep you going and you're not expected to complete everything in it first year. So it will be again prioritizing and planning out through the five years. The last one that Rockville did was in 2015, so we're a little beyond our five-year, five-year plan.
And I know you talked about letters of support. I've received two of them from two groups locally in town, waiting on a third one, but we can also take a private residential request as well. So if somebody fills a need or if they know somebody that maybe sidewalks are just a need for them for transportation purposes, if they don't have a vehicle, the walking is their only transportation, that's a good resource to have a letter of support on. So, you know, we just want to make sure we meet all of the criteria for the application.
Yeah, it's very important. So to receive funding through this office, we have to demonstrate that it impacts the community and that the community wants this to occur. So just for the town to say, we feel this is important, that's great, but they may not receive the funding unless the community's behind that same support. And these letters, you know, have to be letterhead and typed. I mean, they can be handwritten, even if your spelling is not great, it's cool, it's fine. We, we talked about a project in another community today and they actually had letters from their elementary school. Several students wrote in, so I would encourage you all to try to get more input from the community, it's going to be very important to the success of receiving the grant for the community. That's about all I got.
Would, would high school kids, like if they included things that would entice them to stay?
Absolutely, absolutely. If you know some kids, teachers, whatever, I would encourage you to get them as quickly as possible. Like, I would say my preference would be to have them by whatever, next Wednesday, is that the 15th?
13th? No. 15th, yeah.
I know, I'm excited, we'll get one more business-related letter. Wednesday will be the 15th.
Yeah. Say have them, have them, you know, by the 15th.
I wanted to talk into you a couple days prior just so that you could review them and attach those to our application, so.
Yeah, because that will, that will modify the narrative around it if I can reference. All right, well, if there's no other questions, that's all I had to share, but if you think of something later, Luke, you have some stuff you want to say?
I'll just make a comment since this is public and Brandy asked me to be here tonight, so as a resident and kind of one of the co-chairs, I guess, of the Bike and Pedestrian Task Force that we adopted Bike and Head Plan back in May, or was it June, May or June, I encourage all of you to review that document in kind of preparation for this upcoming comprehensive plan. That's a critical piece. Everything that you guys are talking about has been established in that plan. It was adopted into part of the community's action for the next five years. So review that, that includes trails, greenways, bike lanes, all the sidewalks in town, we need to update all of them. There's only a few that don't need updated and we want to connect everything from Beechwood Park to Rockville Lake and from Billy Creek Village to like the, the Christian Church on the east side, everything within our city limits, town limits, we want to make as connected and walkable as possible. There's no reason we shouldn't be able to walk around this town twice and do that expert and get this into the school. But on that note, I just wanted to say that I'm in support of this plan specifically, everything from social, economic, housing, recreation, health, all of those things will be covered in a comprehensive plan like this. So people that are aging in place, we need more senior housing in this community, tons of senior housing, we need that. My grandfather passed away a year and a half ago and he was fortunate to age in his home and pass on there and not a lot of people have that opportunity and, or the resources, so we understand the importance of that. We need more starter housing, more second, like kind of the, the next step up housing, so filling in the missing gaps all across our community to entice my generation to stay and the next generation to come back as well. So all of those things are important, parks and rent are important, I'll preach all day about that stuff. So I'm fully in support of this and it's like I'm the youngest here by, maybe, I'm not going to say how much, but we need more people my age in things like this, so the vision can happen.
Absolutely. So I appreciate that. So I will close this by saying, if, if you don't necessarily have specific thoughts that you're passionate about community and living, if you're interested in participating on a committee, if this grant is awarded for planning, we would love to have you there. We don't want all the same old faces at the table every time because it's very hard to get fresh ideas. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. IMPA, have our representative from IMPA.
Evening, everybody. My name's Eric Ariat, Management of Services at Indy Municipal Power Agency, so first want to say thank you for having us on your agenda this evening. And before I turn things over to Mike Adams, who's Operations Manager at I S C, he has his quarterly reports, I just want to say real quick that we finished up drafting our 2024 workshop calendar for next year. So here later in the month of November, into December, where we give those out to member communities and let folks know the free trainings we have to offer down there at our headquarters. So also, hey, we'll take any questions this evening you may have now or after Mike speaks on things at IMPA, but I'm not going to take up too much of your time, I'm going to turn over to Mike. Can you hand out anything for you?
Sure.
I gotta do something if you gotta do a talk, isn't it?
Five of these presentations. Before we get too started, I wanted to share a little bit about some grant opportunities that are available in the energy space. There's a grid resilience state and tribal four million grant. It covers all kinds of things like AMI, underground electric equipment, utility pole management, relocation of power lines, and many other items. One of the things I'll do is I'll leave this with you and there's a webinar on the 14th of this month. And what I'm planning to do is in the dedicated service communities that are interested is after you, somebody has a chance in the community to see the webinar, is to then come back and kind of do a brainstorm session and say, here, what are the things that you're interested in doing, what can we do to kind of help you form this grant up? Because, I mean, in this case, I think you have to participate 38%, but the other 72% is free chicken, so.
Free chicken.
So passed out, the Service Corps of Maintenance Services. So this is kind of a snapshot from inception, so Rockville in 2018, we started doing dedicated services with you. And through 2023, we've had some, some numbers that kind of help us identify and benchmark kind of our metrics of are we performing well or not, how are things going? So the first area is service allocation, so the five metrics there are poles, replacements, service requests, outage restoration, vegetation management, engineering plan. In 2023, so far we replaced 22 poles. We really don't do service requests with y'all too much, because the team, you know, takes care of the day-to-day system operations as well as vegetation management. We did have the honor of helping restore power on one power outage, came through and it was pretty hard on y'all and we were really blessed to be able to come in and help support and get some things done and get y'all back into power. Engineering and planning, we're working with our engineering team to look at the pole line along US 36 out towards the Wild Hills and we're going to be looking at trying to put together a proposal on that. We can use dedicated services resources to do that, some of the material funding, I know y'all typically provide your own material on that, but it, it's a way that we can put it out to you in the presentation and say, is this something that you want to go forward with? We're open to however you want to do that. I know Doug and his team, we had a pretty good conversation a few weeks ago about that area in particular, and our team's going to start here tomorrow, will be here for probably a couple weeks, so just wanted to make everybody aware of that. The next page is regarding service requests. We really don't do too many service requests with us, in fact, this year it's been zero, and that's just because Doug and his team, you know, they've been able to, they're getting more, you know, more educated and available to do the service work and that sort of thing, which they've, they've done ever since we've started, so it's not like we've taken over for them, it's like we're here to help. It's kind of like a, I liken it to an apartment manager, you know, like the complex manager who can come in and help do the things that maybe y'all aren't interested in doing or not really ready to do. Like I say, outage restorations, we had the one outage, there were four poles that we fixed in that outage. I think one, there were a couple of them over by the sewer plant and then kind of across 36 back in, I think along Jefferson and that area. The 22 poles that we replaced this year are on this page, so we try to keep a good record of where we did those and what we did to them. As I was telling Doug and his team the last time I was here, we've started to take the projects that we do in town and put them into GIS. Now, it's a little bit spotty at the moment, but we do have a little bit of some connectivity, so. And so one of the other things we're doing with our engineering team is coming in a GIS or GIS eating system and Levi Durr is his name, or I'm sorry, Eli Durr, and he'll be coming here and taking a, a device, he'll take a snapshot picture of each and every pole, the services on it, try to get vintage information off the poles if it's available. We'll record all that, put it in a database, but it'll also be geographic. And as we put that together, we'll try to produce maybe a system map for you all so that you have a chance to kind of really see what's, you know, where things are at. And then probably the next step after that would be creating a fuse coordination or a circuit coordination. So if you've ever experienced multiple fuses blowing at the same time, I don't know if you have, but the circuit coordination would allow the correct fuse to go into a place that would be appropriate so that it only, only downstream devices blow and you don't have the nuisance interruptions. So three ways to contact us, we have a phone number here for the M O C, that's when you have emergency outages. This is a website where you can put in service requests, whether they're non-emergency or non-emergency. And then there's another number down here, this 317 number, that reaches Derek Howard, he's my business manager, and I think Brandy, you may have had an opportunity to talk to him from time to time. But we're just going to continue to replace poles throughout town where Doug and his team have a need for, and then continue to respond to service requests if they're available. And at this point in time, like I said, we don't have any open because this team does such a great job. You're welcome. Do you have any questions?
Looking forward to working with your crew starting tomorrow?
Nice. So I was talking to Chris and he's probably going to be here tomorrow and then Wednesday he has a management meeting, but his team will still be here and I thought maybe sometime early next week, maybe him and I and you could kind of get together and, and everybody.
Yeah, that'd be great. Appreciate you guys.
Boy, it's been an improvement since 2018. We used to have so many outages and now one major number here.
That was a tough outage this year, it really was, it was so widespread.
For five minutes of storm, it was pretty bad.
Yeah.
We appreciate you, Doug.
Well, thank you. It's honestly, it's, I've been doing this for a minute and it's hard to help, help the power, my heart's in this space and I appreciate the guys that are in and work really hard every day just to do, just to keep the lights on, so.
Yeah, we do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm going to go in one more time and I promise I will leave. All I do is talk. Just to reiterate before Mike spoke, mentioned briefly about the workshop calendar for 2024. I did forget to state that two of those workshops, one is Electricity 101, which discusses the power industry from generation, transmission, all the way down to your residential customer. So that's a full day of free training on that if anybody needs familiarity with the industry. And also we have IMPA 101, which is a full day of all things IMPA. Yeah, we feed you it both, especially feed you all of them, so don't worry about that.
Doug will be there.
What's that?
I said Doug will be there.
You can't turn that down. But the main thing that day is it starts with history of IMPA, it goes up everything through operations, generation, Mike's division as well, all, everything to legal. And basically what that day is, explains the relationship between IMPA and the membership and how everything works together. So I know we have a little bit of change on council, I know you're new yourself here, if you want to better understand how everything works with IMPA, because our business with your community is power sales, but there's so much more than that, you get to learn all about that for the day. Now, the ultimate experience, if you're interested, is we do have a board meeting coming up on December 8th, I'm sure we'll see Keith, your commissioner, there, but if you would like to tag along with Keith, you are more than welcome to do so. It's December 8th, we start at 10:00 a.m. and we typically break before noon and have lunch and, but you're welcome to stay for lunch if you like or not, so. But if you're interested, just to meet more of our staff and kind of how the meetings operate and what Keith does at the meetings, you're welcome to attempt, so. Unfortunately, you can't vote, he gets the vote, you can't.
Oh, you vote tomorrow.
Yeah. Yeah, everybody votes tomorrow. Yep. All right, well, thank you folks, I appreciate it and yeah, once you have your ear.
Appreciate it. Okay, I have a lot, but I'll go through them as quick as I can. I do have two sets of claims, one will be the end of the month for 149 668 50, and I will have our first meeting of the month, 790 940 236, that seems like a big number. There is an IMPA power bill in there for 266 5. We do have our water and wastewater bond renewals in there, we did have a South Market invoice or 25,000, and we did have an ISI payment for 41 North, which is a completed project, and that is a reimbursal, reimbursable expense of 280 735, so. Yes, yeah, so.
Motion to approve.
You need a second? I thought you said. I'll second. I thought you two were going. Didn't think I was needed.
You'll be needed all night.
All right, so we have minutes from October 16th, I think that was several days ago, and I sent those out to you, if you've forgotten, there's anything that's here.
I wasn't here, so.
Actually, I just, well, neither one of, yeah, I'll hold off. Okay, we'll put that on hold. That's, that's in the meeting. Water adjustments seem a little high too, but for the most part, we have one for 3,000 664 69, which are general, had a couple of just regular leaks and one adjustment for somebody. I do have another separate one on there, it is for 26,434 36, that is a large amount for a water adjustment, but primarily the, all but about $40 of that particular adjustment is the New Hope water meter installation. So it, it is a large amount, but it is water, it is just an adjustment on billing that water was not used, so we're not in any loss, where it's not accountable for lost water or anything like that, it's just a, an adjustment that we had offered to approve previously.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, favor.
Resolutions that I have that Nick's probably still at another meeting, but he was able to get all of these put together for me, so I appreciate that. One is the utility rates, I know we had talked about utility rate on equipment usage probably in the last couple of years, but never really put those into resolution form, so I do have a resolution stating Doug and I have went over the cost per hour on a lot of these here, so it's just the breakdown and I'll make sure everybody gets this emailed to them, but.
Like when we go out on calls and.
Yes, yeah, our usage of a bucket truck, you should have a backhoe. The guys seem to do some, you know, they'll do just some trenching and stuff for miscellaneous projects, so we have a, so I just need a motion for approve that resolution, please. I do have a resolution as well, we talked about in a previous meeting about the, our investments. We've got several CDs that we'll just touch briefly on that are still an interest rate of only a quarter of a percent, where now CDs are up over 5%. So I've created, have Nick create, asked him to create a resolution that we will be looking at, we'll get the rates again just to be sure, but this is a resolution for me to take the necessary actions to carry out some of the investments of the town CDs and we'll probably be doing some investing with First Financial Bank as they were the highest CD rate for that. So I would like to go ahead and get that approved. He doesn't need all signatures on this one, but just the actual resolution approving those CD transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, favor.
The, oh, sorry. No, this is a different one. I have more. I have another resolution.
Are we just signing?
This one you will sign. This one is going to go along with the loan, once we do that, and we'll speak about that a little bit later in the terms of that project. But the loan that we both, we have the Fountain Trust and First Financial both sent, submitted, we do have a final interest rate of 5.34 and the amount of $2 million for a term of 10 years. Would like to go ahead and get this resolution, even though if we're going to discuss the project and potential loan later, but get this resolution approved in the event that we do move forward and I need to close on that loan, I'll have all the information on hand that I need, so I won't be holding the bank up.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we talked about, and Nick had put a bank letter together that was required for a loan as well, so I'll include that. I've kind of been talking for several months, we've acquired that property a few years back in the, in the sale that we own on Jefferson Street. I was able to obtain three different quotes for demo on that, and that was per recommendation of the fire department that that be uninhabitable. I've got a quote from Column Excavating for 9,500, I've got a quote for Crane Excavating for 19,865, and I received a quote for Major Inter- And I received a quote for Major Interprises for 29,422-54 that I would ask that you would make a motion to approve one of those demo quotes to have that property completely cleared. I mean, it's all the way down to seeding and reseeding the property. Just make it a vacant lot. We'll probably do a purchase or bids on that to purchase that property at a later date.
Does he need to look at any of the bids?
I've looked at, you're talking about the South Jefferson?
Yeah, I just wanted to get a demo, a demo approval on one of the three quotes that I received on demo.
Make a motion that we approve Column for 9,500.
Okay.
Were we not selling that to somebody with the house on?
Not for two grand when.
Oh, okay. Just checking. I thought it was rumored somebody wanted to buy.
We went through the appraisal process too, to where we had two appraisals and the average of the two, and we didn't have a bid that met that criteria. So we'll just take care of actually demoing it, cleaning the property up so that it's a vacant property, and then probably take bids on it again on a later date.
I'll second Column.
On favor.
Aye.
And the only, okay, I, Park's gone. Kevin's not here. But I did just, they had a stormwater meeting. And I know the Stormwater Board has their own approval to make their votes on things. They did have a meeting where they awarded Columns, the Stormwater, where they're calling Stormwater Main Number Two. I have that total amount. I just wanted it documented in our council minutes that, for one, that everybody was aware of what the Stormwater Board had wished upon. Columns vote, they had a meeting on October 11th. That total bid was 434,602. I think I made a misprint there, but maybe 14 cents, including a 15% contingency of 84,295. So like I said, I maybe was planning on Kevin or Park speaking a little bit more in depth on that, but just so that we could have that documented in the minutes that you are all aware and on board of that stormwater project.
They'd asked me about doing a contract, but a lot of times we have our people providing the services, produce a contract and then we edit it. So I don't, Columns probably have the existing contract.
Yeah, and I did speak to them and I told them that I would talk to Columns because I didn't think that was something that you would need to create.
Yeah, usually.
They present the information to us within their package of information.
I mean, if they don't have one, I guess we can talk about that. But usually the contractor would provide it and then we either approve it or ask for edits to it.
Okay.
Because if I did that for every contractor we ever contract with, that'd be all I'd ever get accomplished.
Absolutely. So is it, it's okay for me to just ask for a board approval on there, even though the Stormwater Board, so I, or just document it, at least I want to document it in my minutes?
Put it in your minutes, yeah, because they have their own discretionary, especially Stormwater, but.
So I just wanted to throw those figures out there so that everybody is on board.
Columns will probably have their own contract, I would assume.
Okay.
I don't have anything to report. Most of my stuff was done, I assume she's already reported to you.
Yeah, I threw a lot at you.
And I assume Bill will talk about ordinance violations, so we've resolved several of those just this week, so, but.
I don't know that we need to do it now, but I don't want to wait until a month before festival next year. There's been some discussion on that at the county level too, to maybe have an ordinance prohibiting the sale of edibles and.
So we're looking at the TML, because under that, the week, I'm sorry, I'm significantly, today, they were unpacking the festival over there, thing to do list for the county. But the county is looking at the edible synthetic marijuana, all of that and what can be done there. If they regulate it, you guys won't have to regulate it. But we're looking under the Health Department statute is what we're looking under.
So if you regulate it for the whole year, then when the mainstream shows up, then you wouldn't have to worry about them selling those events either.
So we could regulate it for the year if that's what you want to look at, because they're only looking at the festival. So, and I don't know the answer off the top of my head. That's something that's been heavily regulated, I'm sure, so.
Well, for me, it was more, the worst vendor I have ever dealt with in 11 festivals was selling the Delta Eight and other items.
Well, and they were using uppers and downers and, you know, that's the no-no. But the county's looking at it from the TML perspective. But if you're wanting to regulate it for the year, that's heavily regulated through the state of Indiana. But I can look at what we could do in addition to that.
And from my, my perspective, I'm not regulating what's in the edibles. I'm only regulating the edibles.
I understand. But yeah, that's something we can look at if you want me to, I mean.
I would like to.
The festival itself's going to be looked at by the county. But if we want to look the other end, I can look at that and see if there's anything that can be done.
I'll start with the last one first, since it's the ordinance violation. I cited the Dom Brook property and it was sent to the property owner, not to the person actually takes care of the property. There was a judgment against him because he didn't show up, because he didn't realize it. For Fastpace, we didn't end up making them pay because it was a similar situation. And I was just asking if we would do that for him also, since we've already kind of set the precedence that because there was an error. But I also explained to him if this were to happen, that it would still, the next offense, if we have any more, we'd start off at the, up to 75, not up to the 25.
So was it an incident where the information was sent to something that was on property, like on their property record as GIS that was incorrect then?
According to him, it was incorrect, just like when we sent it to Fastpace. We sent it to what was on GIS.
Which that was a property owner or company affiliated? So I just want to make sure that we understand what his situation is. If he's the property owner, it's, the information's being sent to someone other than him? Is that right?
Ian, did you talk to him?
I did. It's owned by his parents, I guess, and he just takes care of it.
So the information went to someone else other than?
Your parents and your bunch. So you do have to take official action, because we did get a judgment and there is a lien on the property. So you'll have to tell me to release the lien if that's what you want done. We got a judgment of 2,500 because they failed to appear.
Is that what we did with Fastpace?
We did, yeah.
Then almost make a motion that we do the same for this one occasion. But if there's a second violation.
On favor.
Okay. At 33 criminal investigations in October as compared to 18 last year. Total for the year's been 276 and last year we were at 369. 128 of those have been violent, 17 in October. Collectively, we responded to 486 calls per service. Now, 12 crashes, one vehicle, 13 arrests, five alarm calls, three being sent invoices. According to the ECWS, our E-ticket system, 58 entries, two felonies, five misdemeanors, 13 infractions, zero ordinance violations, 49 warnings. In October, we had 353, last year in October, we had 353 cases. Our calls, 18 cases, eight crashes, seven toes. ECS, ECWS entries were 51, felony three, misdemeanor nine, contractions 14, warnings 50, and arrests eight. We have an open crossing guard position. I recommend putting an ad in the paper for the open position. I'd also recommend that if we have no reply or no candidates or no qualified candidates, that we consider announcing two weeks after the time that we're to close, that the children be directed to use the square to cross the street. I feel like if we, as a police department, are there manning it, we're providing a false sense of security that the kids are going to get across the street safely, because we can get called away at any time and we may or may not have somebody to get there when we're called away. And parent sends their kid to school thinking they're going to cross, cross the street with crossing guard there. There's no officer there or crossing guard there to get him across the street. I don't know what the legal.
I'd feel better if you had a consistent, either you're there or you're not there. I don't believe, I mean, from a legal standpoint, I think if you were put in front of a court, they're going to look at that negatively if we're doing that and then not doing it. So we need to either be all in or allowed.
And if we don't fill it, I would suggest contacting schools and making sure that information gets home to parents.
That'd be a good idea.
Okay, is it okay to go ahead and?
Yeah.
I need to ask for permission anytime I spend money over $2,500. I'd like to spend $3,932.25 out of the training with Lucky Gunner. There may be adjustments there due to shipping or whatnot, but I'm told there's $4,200 in that training fund. So I'd like to purchase that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Favor.
I also was budgeted for $5,000 in tires. And we're getting toward the end of the year and I'm going to need to purchase some tires. I have roughly, looking, I've spent $1,019 of the $5,000. That's why I'd like to spend some more, probably $3,500 on tires.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'd just like to throw out that Ian did some Evo training on Saturday and I went out and took a joyride. It was amazing. It was all backing up. I would have hit every cone and he didn't hit a single cone, so I was very impressed. No, my backing skills are sadly lacking.
Should we notice this was on a closed course?
Well, yes, yes.
This is not on the highway.
No, it was not.
Okay. So nobody getting any after this.
Or you want to park without a horse?
And I didn't have to ride in that little seat in the back either.
Not this time.
Not yet.
So I don't have a whole lot. Just the hydrant job on South Market that you guys voted on to do is complete. And the hydrant has been removed, so has the check meters and all that. All the caps have been made, so that job is completed for B and T. The fuel station that was hit is complete. Heat is on in it, so we'll get there. Light at the dog park has been installed. Things, people seem to be.
Do we have any cameras down there that point toward the dog park?
Not today, no. Somebody does a dog.
We did have cameras that were allocated to the park that I don't think we ever put up. Because I feel like we ought to have some there in case people are dropping animals.
Well, I can't hear you, Melissa.
We could talk about it part four.
There's some cameras down at the pool and everything. Point is, we got to rearrange some for, maybe you're ready, but, and everything, so.
Did you guys sing "Happy Birthday" to Chris yet?
Is it just working?
No, it's not. That was long ago.
Yesterday.
This morning?
So.
Melissa will solo.
So, now, I really don't have a lot. I do have approval I need to get here for some electric stuff. Pad mount, some wire harnesses, sockets and some meters at the cost of $2,808.71. $1,208.71 will be billed vengeance out of this, as further.
Who's that from?
Anna.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor.
So, and then outside of that, we're going to continue with, we'll be pouring the parking, charging station this week.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yes, I'm going to pour it later this week. It's all ready to go. But we're trying to prepare a couple of their sidewalks. It's only about a yard and you get charged a minimum. Four yards, so we're trying to get some other areas ready.
I can't remember. Do we get any portion of that fee when they charge?
Once, once all that is completed and you have that form back to me, then I will complete the application for funding for that one. I don't know what that person does, actually, but there will be like a billing cycle on that, so.
Okay.
So, yes, we should get some of those, recoup some of that. I don't know what that fee, I don't even know what that fee looks like as far as the charging goes.
Yeah, so once that's poured, then I'll, we'll get that paper filled out and sent. That way, they can, they said it won't take probably less than a day to get them up and going. And then outside of that, we're just going to keep working on the leaves on the square. Try to get ready for Veterans Day and the flags will be up.
And we are not able to do pickup, right? Because we're being.
Right now, we can't.
Make sure that we just.
We are, we are going to, we have the vacuum machine pulled out and try to revamp it to see if we can. It just doesn't work quick enough and well enough to be going up and down streets. I mean, we'd be lucky to get a couple of houses a day. It's just not designed right now for that. It takes a pretty big machine to drive up and down roads.
People can still dump them down there.
Yes, they can still dump, and we are.
In a location.
Yeah, we are still, Alan will start on that tomorrow to see if we can get it to work better and definitely use it like on the square, the park and other areas. But it's just, takes a pretty good outfit to go up and down roads and get them done in a timely manner. And that's all I got, just any questions about anything else coming up?
No, but I did, were you able to talk to anyone with U-Mac today by chance? Troy was going to plan on being here when I talked to him this morning, so maybe something's come up. But Mike sent me a bunch of, which we can probably hold off till the next meeting to discuss, but I didn't know if he'd talk to you about any of these.
Some bids?
Yeah, on the wells, maybe.
Yes, he sent me a text that they have problems with the wastewater plant. And if there's any questions or is a tin hill that we can phone, that we'd be able to answer any questions. But he was hoping to be able to get away, but they got Brett down there now. And I think, number down there trying to figure out a sludge power issue down there right now, the wastewater plant. That's why he is not here.
That's why he had a power call right before 4 o'clock too, so. Yeah, I don't, I think we probably want to have maybe somebody, maybe Mike elaborate on some of these, because it looks like we've got a well number two. All the stuff's from Peerless Midwest, but, I mean, this one's for $47,000 for tolling, setting, color video, four days of surge cleaning with chemicals, overhaul. So I think if we, if these aren't, if these weren't spoke to you today on emergency things, we'll hold on to these. I'll talk to Mike tomorrow. Yeah, there's the emergency. Let's talk about these at the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it's something down there to, the panel, they're having problems with the sludge return, I'd say. So we are down there helping them, I guess.
Thanks, Ted. Excellent. Old business.
Again, Kevin and Park both, I think we're going to elaborate maybe a little bit. I think we did go ahead and move forward with the new cemetery pamphlets to get those ordered. And then there was a question from some plots, but I think that they may have run by you, but if we want to wait till the next meeting till they can speak upon that, that's fine too, unless you want to discuss anything about the resale or sale of plots that Mark had come across.
I don't remember what he told me, but he actually just said, I think there was talk about having it just certified that they had tested.
Well, it's something, it's not pressing, but we could wait and.
Yeah, it might be better have Kevin or Mark talk about it. Because I can't remember what exactly they told me they were going to do. We did come up with a plan on it.
And I don't know if this is old business, but as far as the drinking water grant, I know there was a pre-construction meeting scheduled. I think I would feel a little better if we canceled that. There was some discussion that they were going to go ahead and start work at the treatment plant. But I think we should hold off until the issue with NDOT and the possible, possibility of us having to obtain right-of-way's, hold off on all of it until that is resolved.
So, two that I understand, we were going to have, which I didn't realize, tomorrow, but they've changed it. They asked me if they could do a kickoff meeting for Thursday. Would you like for me to postpone that and let's just wait until we hear back further? Same, everybody's on the same page there?
I think that would probably be a good idea.
Okay.
I communicated with Roger that we can't have a kickoff meeting until we host the pre-construction. And I was just sharing concerns that we don't have the other issue resolved as well. And just to protect the town in regards to the grant money. I don't want you to be in a position in which you're spending grant money on a work of the treatment plant if we don't have these other things resolved.
Yes, and that is kind of going along with the lines that I had asked Nick. We go ahead and have all of our documents for our loan, but I didn't want to get into a loan closing process in the event that something would happen with that, that we may have to hold off, reapply or whatever, worst case scenario. So that's why I've held off on that process as well. So I will contact them tomorrow and we will hold off on that kickoff meeting that I originally said was Thursday at 3:30. We will cancel that and as soon as I get anything back from NDOT.
Hopefully, we'll get it resolved quickly. Hopefully, we'll get it resolved quickly.
Yeah.
Okay.
As if anything with the state's.
Well, one thing prior forget to, the, uh, building addition on Strawberry Road will start tomorrow. So. Talk to Sean, it'll be out there tomorrow starting.
Oh, U Mac's not here to, um, they're gonna do the Jackson Street hydrant replacement tomorrow morning, so, um, I went ahead and advertised that Jackson Street residents would be without water beginning at probably eight A M for a couple of hours tomorrow while they replace that hydrant that's been leaking for quite some time. Is it okay if I go through the updates real quick before we are closing?
Yep.
Um, so our Community Crossings twenty twenty-three dash two Anderson, Walton Howard is how I have the title. Um, we did reapply, and we were awarded that November third. Um, we must be under contract within four months of that date for the community crossings, so we're still right in the early preliminary of that, but we were awarded that grant. That was, um, if you remember, the one that we did unfortunately have to rescind those grant funds um, due to a contractor not being eligible to work through N dot, which was a requirement with community crossings funding. So I'm hoping that those people will come back when they did that project.
Have they done what they needed to?
I am, I am hoping so and assuming so, that they would have. Um, it's a pretty, pretty big project for the town and for them. Um, so we'll put that out to bid. We could talk about that at a later date on how we want to go move forward on putting that to bid. Um, South Market, Doug attended the last meeting on that. I think everything's going as planned. Um, Forty-One North, that's, uh, project, that's complete. Um, we've got one resident wanting to hook on that Doug's gonna work with them on getting that taken care of, but, um, got pictures of it fencing around the pump station. That looks really nice. Um, don't have anything new on our water line inventory. The parking lot, um, as we refer to the J and J parking lot, it's completed. Um, we are in the process of getting, go ahead and move forward with our patronicity grant. Um, we're gonna try to submit that application. We kind of eliminated the lighting on that, because we did have to go ahead and move forward and get the lighting ordered, but we're gonna try to do an application for landscape banners and poles, um, flag pole. So we would need to raise about twelve thousand five hundred would be needed in donations. Um, we do have a few thousand dollars already committed verbally from residents and businesses around. Um, we can accept money thirty days prior to our grant kickoff, and that'll be January one, and that grant will run from January one to February twenty-nine. So we have some, we have some businesses that wanted to make a donation to that project, and they want to make that donation with their twenty-three funding, so we are able to take those grant dollars in the month of December, so that they can still apply. Um, the, so we talked about the Oprah Drinking Water Grant. Bike and Pedal, we kind of spoke about that, goes in with the comp plan, but.
I just want to make sure that those are separate items.
Yes.
Cause you, you are going after a grant for a comp plan.
Yes.
Bike and pedestrian could feed into that, but they are two completely different plans.
Yes, yes. Um, Strawberry Lift Station, so Doug just commented about, um, getting that done. Water tank maintenance, I've got some updating. They just sent that to me today on the water tank maintenance, so we'll get that taken care of. And then the stormwater two, um, main was the only other things for Columns that I had that wanted to touch base on.
Sorry, skip that.
No, that's fine. That's all I have.
Moving to new business. Any public comments?
I don't know if they heard you.
We're trying to be kind.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.